Are operating under the following procedure. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting and will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff for the first selectmen. For public input before the meeting, please email your comments to publicinput@columbia.org, cct.org within 24 hours before the meeting. For public input during the meeting, your comments can be submitted through the chat feature in Zoom meetings or wave your hand and request your mic to be unmuted. Please include in both methods your name and address. Okay, as our tradition, since this time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. I guess I just need to approve the agenda. It's a very simple agenda. I assume we have no additions. I asked for approval of the meeting agenda. Unless there's someone who wants to add something.
No.
Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob, yes, and I assume Steve's still not here.
Right.
Okay. Okay, all we have tonight is old business budget workshop. Mark, you want to pick this up?
Sure. So Beverly and I worked today on a lot of last minute updates, talking to different department heads, and I can run through and brief you. Rob, on your page, I did print out because we just printed them out. So you'll see some of the documents say March 10th, and I sent them electronically to the board. So if you had printed them out previously, they're March 5th, but the first four pages now also say March 10th. But it's minor changes and Bev and I can walk you through it. Just as a heads up, the Board of Ed did, I guess they passed, have they passed their budget to Five Pack, Bev? Or they've just voted on it? We're going to present to-
They motioned, they motioned to move the budget forward to Five Pack next week, so.
So Board of Ed right now has a budget of $13,61,315. That's a 2.71% increase. Their operating budget went up $344,772, and their capital budget is up $175,000. Now Bev, is that an increase of $175,000? Or it is a capital budget of 175?
That's their capital budget for next year.
Okay, that is their budget, okay. Wait a minute. And right now, the Board of Selectmen budget with some of the minor changes Bev and I just worked on. We were taking some of the money that we felt would be left over, especially in capital, and using it to offset some of the budget line items. But right now, the Board of Selectmen, if we make no cuts tonight at all, we're at an increase of $261,238 with a budget of, hold on, someone's trying to get a Mary Rokel, with a budget of $4,532,212, which is a 6.12% increase. Now, a big factor driving that, and we'll have more discussions on it in executive session, is what we'll be doing with our healthcare. As I explained previously, the CT chip collaborative that we established with all the towns, one town did back out, our biggest town, and as a result, we had to look at putting the healthcare out to bid. We did go out to bid, and there's two options that we're going to discuss tonight. Board of Ed had an executive session last night. We'll have one tonight on that. And then, once we're all on the same page, we'll have presentations to the employees. So that's all happening as we go. So right now, the budget as it stands has a, instead of an 18% increase in healthcare, it has a 2.25% increase. And it is possible that that might even be less, but that'll be determined at a later date. The other increase I talked about earlier was the cyber insurance. That's something new. We're having so much cybercrime. And now I guess we're going to have to have catalytic converter insurance because the whole area, we just found out two more trucks got hit. Our Public Works trucks that were outside in the yard lost their catalytic converters. These were trucks we were about to sell. But now we've lost a senior center van and two Public Works trucks. So it's becoming a big problem.
I know that the gentleman that owns Kennedy Exchange, he had a truck outside his business and they stole the catalytic converter. I think it was last week.
Also, one of their neighbors, Kennedy actually works on our computers and they were in the other day. And, yeah.
I know, that's awful.
It's a problem.
It's a problem.
What, 70 seconds, the guy took it?
Really? They're skilled. Yeah.
Probably with a saw. Saw's all, there you go. Just go in and cut it off.
The next thing, and we are looking out. I had the trooper go check with U-Haul. I guess some people are putting cages on the catalytic converters, bolting in rebar so they can't be easily removed. So it's a big challenge. But anyway, probably the next budget to discuss is the fire department. I see Stephen is on. Pastemsky.
He was, I don't see him now.
Looks like he came back on with his iPad.
Okay.
So I believe he is on. But right now, we heard the presentation last week, and we're at an operating increase of $43,850 and a capital increase of $175,000. The capital's between $125,000 for the rescue truck and $50,000 for a new SUV to replace an old diesel truck to transport members to the scenes of accidents and fires and also to transport for training. And on the operations, a big part of it is $10,000 for a media company to help them advertise for volunteers and do printings and mailings, and $20,000 is there to help as additional coverage for expenses for the volunteers since we're the, us and Andover, the two last volunteer fire departments in Eastern Connecticut.
Right.
So, I don't know, the only, the only thing to discuss, and Stephen might want to pipe in, you know, that $10,000 for a media campaign. I think between Jen and I and the Views and the newsletter. Oh, here's Stephen. And the newsletter, here is. Well, I'll just wait till Stephen gets on an audio.
Come on.
All right.
Hi, Steve.
We're just discussing the fire department's budget.
Yep.
And we're really at the operating, the extra request for $43,850.
Yeah.
Capital of $175,000 made up by the $50,000 SUV and $125,000 for the rescue truck.
Yep.
So I was just saying, the only, the only area I can recommend and maybe take a trim on that budget is the $10,000 for the media company and possibly do some of the design work in-house and use our Views magazine and our newsletter, digital newsletter for distributing advertising to the community for volunteers. I don't know if, you might want to ask Stephen what his thoughts are on that. Pastemsky.
Well, I think that with the budget, the way we're looking at it, let's, let's mark that as an area where I think we can do what we can for them. Like you said, the Views, the monthly newsletter, the new website looks fantastic. So drive usage there. And if we need to do a mailer or something, we can work on it. But 119, okay. The bottom line is, you know, I think that's a place we could probably hang on to some money.
All right, and actually I skipped over social services. We have in the budget, the additional eight hours to move the social service from a two-day week to a three-day week. So that's an area of discussion.
I had some questions that I needed clarification on. So when looking at this, AHM provides two and a half days at the school for individual group counseling, a lot of things there for parents and for kids to access. We provide Katie there as an assistant, and we also, the school also has a social worker is employed by the school and a psychologist. But I hope they're meeting the needs of the family. We don't have that many in town that are really being overlooked. I hope they're all getting their needs met. The other thing is, looking at some of the information that she told us what she's working on, I'd like to know how many of those are COVID. But I know that the, the position is important to the people of the town. So are we, any other thoughts from people? I think she's valuable. I think it's good for the people in town. I want to make sure that the eight hours is what, you know, we have a need for that. Looking in the school and the family stuff, hopefully we're covering the needs there. At the senior center, I know Bernadette has done a lot there and has turned a lot over to Katie. I see the list here, there's, thankfully it doesn't seem to be overwhelming, but new people all the time. So I'd like to hear other people's thoughts. Did everybody get a copy of that, Mark?
Yes.
Great. I talked to the people at the school, and they do, they provide a lot of services, but that is mostly related to the school activities to help the kids to be able to handle academic stuff. They don't, they don't provide services in the home. The AHM person, they may ask her, you know, to make referrals to different programs, but she kind of gives them information and then, you know, they follow up with this. So sometimes it requires more support to kind of access some of these different programs in the community than the school can do. See, I guess I'm not thinking the school is, you know, is where Katie's going to be doing a lot of her work. I'm thinking it's more of the seniors and other adults in town and maybe some families. I did speak to Beverly and she had some plans on how to utilize the town, utilize her and maybe create some kind of, you know, get together with some of the other programs to figure out how to, you know, how we can kind of work together and-
Beverly, Beverly who? Who'd you talk to about that, Beverly who?
No, not Beverly, I talked to Maria, the superintendent at Porter.
Yeah, because I didn't know what Beverly, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
My thought, I just don't know. I don't have enough data. I really don't. I don't know if we need to go to another basically full-time employee once you do that. I just don't know. I haven't been given enough, to me, I haven't had a good enough argument other than it would be nice to have her another day. Well, of course, it'd be nice to have lots of people another day, or I just don't know. I have nothing to base this on.
Lisa, did you get the email we sent out to answer all Steve's last month?
I answered a lot of those questions in the email.
I don't know if I got that one.
Okay, that might be why you're, because it's a three-page email on stats of what she does and number of cases and types of areas that she's-
I didn't, I did not get that. Or I have not seen that, I'm sorry. I may have missed it, it may have come to me, I may have missed it, but I didn't think I had.
Okay, Rob, Bill, any thoughts?
I guess, well, I have a question for Mark. What is, what's your feeling, Mark? You're a little closer on these things, seeing what's going on. What's your gut feeling?
From looking at the types of things she's working on, based on her letter and talking to her, she's worked on dementia, a person that was disabled, two people that were unemployed, 12 people that needed energy help, four people who need financial assistance, six people that needed support for older and disabled relatives and spouses, four that needed home aid, two that needed housing help, one legal help, seven medical help, one that was involved in a scam, and one substance abuse. Kate, in her case management, which is really what a social worker does when they are working through those types of cases, she does the assessment of a need, determines eligibility for financial, social, and supportive services, assists with the coordination in these programs, refers to appropriate programs and services, does advocacy, does budget counseling, information on programs and services, follow-up and support. For example, last week I received three calls regarding tax filing assistance, and that would typically be a referral out.
Mark, I think Rob got the email, so he's asking you your gut feeling on this.
Yeah, so here's, here's what happens.
Yeah, thank you.
When you open up a service like this, it just keeps growing. Once people get the word that there's someone they can go to for help, they're going to go there. And what, what'll happen is Ash, Bev and I would often get involved with a resident that needs oil or needs financial assistance, and we have a fund, but that doesn't solve the problem. There's a reason they're in this bind, and it takes someone with a lot more time than Jen, Bev, or I to, or Bernadette on a lot of cases, to really get in and try to solve these issues. So I, I think she's going to eat up another eight hours in no time. I think the challenge will be, as she does more and more and more, it'll grow more and more. That's, that's your challenge whenever you bring on a new service that people find appealing. It's kind of like the food bank. We have to now back it back because it did so well that now we have to really start looking for people that truly need the food now that the pandemic is winding down.
Okay.
One of the things I noticed, those, the different things she's doing, they don't really seem to be necessarily COVID-related either. There's the kind of general things that are going to happen in good or bad times, if I'm reading it correctly.
Okay.
That's what she was saying, that it's, she's, you know, she's surprised how many issues there are that are not related to COVID that she's dealing with.
But there's a lot of issues that are collateral to COVID. You know, things are going on in people's lives because they've got, you know, financial or employment issues, and I think that's where she steps in.
Right.
I said this last weekend, I'll say it again. I think she's a good resource. You know, I'm concerned, I think it's a valuable thing for the community. And I guess, you know, I guess Mark's point about people will take advantage of it, but I think you want that, and I think there's a need for it there.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Okay. Um. Okay, Mark, I mean, you know, you got, you got, you know, people for it. You got people who need more, but, you know, we voting on it? Or we just say yes, no, what? Keep it in there, let Five Pack question it, and we'll, we'll have an answer for them, I guess.
Okay.
I agree.
Probably the, the next area to discuss is the library. I see Sue Epstein's on, in case you have any specific questions. Bev and I, Sue is right now thrown out and offered to reduce her budget by, Beverly, what was it? $1,100 and something?
$1,178.
$1,178. That might even, right now, that reflects, they had budgeted 10% for their healthcare.
10% of what?
10% decrease in their previous costs.
Okay, what were their previous costs for healthcare? So what does that 10% mean in dollars, Mark? Do we know?
Right now, I believe that the true cost that they would save over what the healthcare costs is really more like $3,000 than $1,178. If, if they have the expense which I saw, which I know what we bill them.
Well, I know the last time we talked, you said the library brought in the budget, and they said a lot of it was cost for the insurance, okay? Last year, I mean, this is a year that I hope anything they've done COVID, there's been grants and stuff to pay back for the COVID issues. There, I don't know if they've cut staff or put periodic people on furlough or unemployment. Not one person for the whole year, maybe they've, but I don't know if their costs have gone up over there for that. I know they don't really share their line items with you. If it's $3,000 for insurance and it comes through where we're not going up on our insurance costs, did you explain that to everybody?
Yes, now Sue is waving her hand if you want to hear her side of it.
I'd love to hear from Sue.
Okay. I'll ask her to unmute.
Okay, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. What you should have gotten from a budget, you should have actually gotten an itemized request.
We did.
So there, so I, if you have that. Now, our initial request from you included a decrease in our materials and a decrease in all of our programs across the board because our request seemed high and we were trying to get it initially as low as possible. So when Mark asked me Monday if we could take a look at this again because we had increased, or you guys had anticipated a serious decrease in health insurance, what I said to Mark was I didn't, if we could do that, I was hesitant to decrease and keep the decreases or the cuts in our materials and programming. So we went through the budget. We made level our, most of our programming and materials costs, though we kept some of our decreases that we are anticipating changes in. We kept a decrease in computer, the computer category. And so the request that you've got encompasses the decrease in health insurance, levels off our materials and programming, decreases some of our materials and computer services, and does include increases that we have no choice about, such as a minimum wage increase, a big increases coming with our cleaning contract. We set, put it out to bid, and we took the lowest bid we could get. The other increases in our bookkeeping, things that we really don't have any choice about. Sadly, no, we don't have anything that is helping us with COVID expenses. It's coming out of our emergency reserves, and there are not COVID expenses in this budget request because we are optimistically thinking that that's not going to be an issue.
Mark, well, I haven't seen the itemized, so, but Sue kind of explained it. I find it, you know, how much, I don't know. Okay.
Do you think that you could qualify for some grants, COVID grants? Or you're not sure?
Um, no, we've tried a couple and we've been denied. We tried FEMA, and we, we tried for a PPP initially way back at the initial start of this. We did get some PP money, but not that much, and we've missed that window, basically.
So you, you got PPE money?
We put in the request, and we got, we've got some money, and at that time, the board thought that this was not really going to last, and it wasn't really going to happen. And that fund, some, my understanding is that funds got returned. However, that fund also would not have been on the current year budget. That, those funds would have been on the 1920 budget. Because it would have been last, huh, last April. Yep, last April, and what we're working on in this year's budget started in July. And this request is for next July.
So Mark, what should that number read? Now that Sue believes there may be some wiggle room there. What, I'm sorry, Sue, what did you, you cut it $1,100?
Um, yeah, I don't have that number in front of me, but the, the adjusted request is for $423,422,000, so 423422. The initial request was 424600.
Yeah.
$1,178.
Right.
So the healthcare cost is going down on the average $3,000. If you still have two people on the plan like you did last year. And they've taken some of that money and put it back into some of the cuts that they had previously done at the 424, $442,000. So they redistributed some of that savings to other programs as well.
I'm not sure what that means, but, okay. So if there's $3,000 in savings on insurance, what are you saying? They're going to take $1,000, but they're going to keep $2,000 of the increase and put them back in other programs?
Or keep $1,800 and put it in other programs?
Right, we're going to take the money that we initially put, asked for for insurance and bring the things that we cut, some of the things, not all of the things, but bring the materials and the programs that we had to cut to get that back to level.
Okay, so here's a question for you, Sue. The governor is relaxing, you know, some of the COVID restrictions. What is it going to take for the library to open up and allow people to browse through and pick books and kind of be back in business fully?
What does this have, what does that question have to do with a budget that's going to start in July?
I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
Okay, so this is not a budget-related question?
No.
Okay, we're looking at a variety of metrics for opening library. We have a variety of issues that we have to account for. One of the things that we are looking at at this point is when the metrics are back where they were last July, August, September, when we were open for browsing, and we are not actually there yet. I am cautiously optimistic we're going to hit that by next month.
Right.
Cautiously optimistic that as vaccines increase, that the infection rates are going, going to go down, and all of that is going to converge in the next few months. But my crystal ball isn't telling me what, what's happening yet.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate you taking a look at the budget and bringing some money out of there, so. Thank you. Mark, did you have any other suggestion on that? Or we just, you know, we're just, okay.
Fine.
Mark, did you have any other suggestion on that or we just, you know, we're just, okay, fine.
Is that, does anybody else want to discuss the library that's on the board? Then we'll move to lake management. And what, a lot of discussions with the chairman, Mike Nazzo, with Henry Beck.
You tell me the number for, where's Lake Man, oh, there it is, okay, the LMAC.
Right.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So what we've done is, there's, there's a lot of things we're thinking about on how to really go forward with all of our testing and whether we want to own equipment or not. And right now we feel with the season upon us, I mean, we, we've closed the gate today, the lake's going to start filling back up and we'll be boating in no time. So we felt we should keep testing with Dr. Kortman at the moment. And we left, instead of $10,000 for testing equipment, we dropped it to 2,000, pulled 8,000 out. The 2,000 can be used for some of the more simpler equipment that I think we could do and have more consistent data, possibly on oxygen levels of the water and clarity of the water, things like that. So we cut 8,000 out of the equipment line, it was 10, and we cut 4,000 out of engineering for a volume of water that needs to be moved from the bottom of the lake in order for a siphon to work. We're not convinced. A siphon is the direction we need to go, so until we are, we're not ready to spend engineering dollars on that solution. So we, we want to keep investigating that further, which we'll do during this season. So we've cut back on the, Bev, what is that budget line now? At 6:30. I'm missing that page.
What's the increase?
It's a reduction of 9960, is that it, Mark?
I, I think, I don't have the updated page for some reason. Do you have it, Steven?
No, it says here, hi, Mark from Bev, detailed operating, so LMAC reduction of 9,960. And 8,000 off equipment line, so 30. Uh, hold on, I, I find my calculator here.
It'll bring it to 33,053 to now 12,403 dollars increase.
Okay, that's why I was confused. That's a 12,403 decrease.
Increase.
No, well, no.
Wait, 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 hold on. On the wrong page here.
Right.
It's only 2,443 dollars now.
2,443.
Increase, yeah.
Okay. Better.
This says, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, it says 12,403 increase, is that not right?
That's the original.
That's the original that you have?
Okay.
We made these changes three hours ago.
Oh, okay. Mine's dated 3.5. Okay. So it's changed.
Yes.
What is the percentage increase now with the changes? I have the old one too.
Uh, my guess is somewhere around 2,000, it's going to be seven, 7% Bev, or what?
It's down about 6.12%. I do have to put the library change in, I missed that this afternoon, so it'll probably be about the same, 6.11, 6.12.
No, we're talking, yeah, that's the lake one, right?
Talking about lake management.
Just, just the lake one, not, not the total.
I'm, I'm seeing a 60% change here on, on the old one, the outdated one that we were sent.
Right.
So I'm trying to find out what the current percentage increase for lake management.
Yeah, it's about six and a half percent, Bill. If it's 33,000 and we're adding 2,400, 33 times 7.
No, it's 22.
No, the new, the new increase for the lake management after making these changes is 11.83% overall. Total increase to their budget will be 2,443 dollars.
Thank you.
Okay.
But if it's 33,000 now, oh, that's with, okay, that's with, yeah, okay, very good, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, that was the old request.
Yeah, all right. I was adding them on, all right.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Back over there.
I think that's the main operating areas that we had to talk about. Probably the other big discussion is, you know, a big part of our challenge in this budget is revenues. And actually, we have someone who needs.
Mark, yeah, can you, can you tell the mute, I can't hear.
Who's, who's on?
It doesn't matter, just mute them all. Keep the board members up and then mute everybody. Anybody else can raise their hand. But we'll do it during Audience of Citizen, really.
Okay. All right. In revenues, a big, big, big cut to us was in special ed grants and in interest income. And Bev, do you want to? Do you want to review? Looks like special ed is down 90,000. Oh, Bev, you muted.
Okay, so, so there's been a few factors this year that's happened. Um, with the drop in special ed, they, um, the ECS grant is being decreased by about $57,000 because of the change in special ed last year, so they take it out of ECS this year. And as a result of further reductions in special ed, this year's excess cost grant has been reduced. And so we're getting a lot less than anticipated also, which it was another $75,000. So just on with the changes in special ed, we have about 120, 20, 130,000 dollars less in municipal aid coming in this year. The interest rates, which we didn't anticipate while COVID was started last spring, basically tanked. So we're losing about $80,000 in interest this year. And based on what I heard, it's going to take at least a year or two to get back up to where we were a year ago. And also with the changes in preschool, well, going only four days a week, I'm anticipating possibly a $20,000 less of preschool tuition coming in. Based on the reports, Carol Price has been providing on property tax collections. We are behind from last year, but April 1st is the, the full deadline, so she's hoping to get back up to about 98%, but right now it's an unknown until we get through to April 1st. So our revenues have definitely have been impacted, but they have also been offset by real estate conveyance fees and permits have been up. It's not going to get us everything we've lost, but that is helping minimize the change in revenue.
How much, how much are we behind for collection of taxes?
I think she just hit a little over 96% and usually we're a little higher than that, maybe closer to 98 by the time she's gotten through the January collection, so.
In dollars, we're, we're about to do a tax sale in, in a week. That'll bring in almost 10,000 and we're right now about $300,000 behind in collections. And Carol went through and her prediction is by the end of March, we'll bring in that 300,000.
And we only usually budget 9, 97.5, right?
Correct.
April 1st is the new deadline now?
Yes. Yeah, so we should be, Carol's predicting 98.3% at the end of March, which is almost identical to where we were at the end of March last year.
And we only budget 97.5, so we should be over what we had, what we budget.
Yes, she's thinking with the stimulus checks, it'll make it even easier for people to pay off their back taxes.
Now, you said the special ed was down 90, or 130,000. Is, was the cost down at all or just what the, what we, the revenue down?
Yes, the cost is coming down, so they have to send in a budget each, begin the school year, anticipating what their costs are going to be. So last year, there was an overestimate, there were some changes in the special ed tuition line and a little bit of transportation. So basically the state paid us ahead of time. So when they audited at the end of the year, based on the annual report I submit for the school, they realized they overpay it. So when they overpay it, they go into ECS and deduct it. They deduct, though. And then this year, again, there was some decreases again, so that were not anticipated when we set the budget, so now we're going to probably get a lot less than what we anticipated. So next year's budget is showing a decrease. I got some firmer numbers from the special ed director, so the number of budgeting is a little firmer, but it is a drop because there's not as many excess cost students. And the threshold for that is usually about $85,000 and a lot of the students are coming below that right now for special ed, so that means our grant's going to go down.
But so are our costs, so.
So are the costs, that's what I was trying, it's not dollar for dollar, though.
Well, the, the costs are coming down, no, and when, and the state will only pay what's above that threshold at a certain percent. It's not 100% reimbursement above, so see if you have $100,000 is $25,000 difference or whatever, they are not going to give you the full 25, so.
No.
Their formula is.
All right, then, that leads us on to capital. And right now, Bev and I, we spent this afternoon going through our existing capital and seeing what we could use to offset some of the different budgets. And right now we have it down to 1,161,749, which is over last year's capital of 778,500. That's a 383,249 dollar increase. So, you know, you can see the different line items with.
What page is that, please?
Page 27.
Yes, okay, projected spending. 21 or 2021 projected spending, huh? Right?
Yes, 2021.
1.6.
2122.
964,000, right?
No, hold on Steve, I'll run this over to you.
Yeah, so the board has this one.
Yeah, so. I have the latest update I'm going after.
9, this shows 964, 763.
That's what I just said.
Yeah. I, I'm agreeing with you, I just find it.
This is the one's dated March 10.
So looking at the new one here, 2122, 9921, 263. Is that what we're showing, Bev?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Like improvement fund, good, revale, 190 DPW equipment, 400,000 for facilities cap improvement bill, 400,000, no, that's.
That's the year after, that's the difference here. Go to the left.
So it says Rec Park, $28,000, no, 255.
Rec Park.
No, 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 go to the left. You're looking at 2024, 25. You have to go towards the middle of the page for the 2122 budget.
Okay, budget appropriation?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be the same as the projected spending?
No, that's what, um, that's what the requests are that were given. None of any carry money we're carrying over that's not going to be used in capital. So that's what we're kind of asking the town to fund next year. The spending is what we anticipate we're going to be using the money for next year.
Yeah, okay.
So look at, like, road resurfacing is 290,000. It was 263,500 last year.
But aren't we paid out of that for the, from the tar fund?
So from tar, there's a new, the new tar is about 203,000 and there's only $39,000 left on this excess tar money, so you're basically going to be funding another 40 out of the general fund.
Okay. Fox Culver, 25. Rec Park, DPW. Okay, so 1.16, correct?
Correct.
All right. So nobody has any questions, keep going. I, I love the summary page.
I'm, I'm having difficulty that I'm going to be asked to vote on this budget and I don't have the newest numbers. I, I just, I can't see what you're looking at.
What your number is, is 1,176,000. So Bev and I pulled, you know, 5,000 out of the transfer station and 4,500 out of facilities equipment. So we, we went through and found some money and just reduced it as much as we could without.
15 grand.
That was really changing things.
So that's a little different. That's the 2021 budget appropriation line or column, correct?
2122, 21 and 22 budget appropriation.
Okay.
So the one I'm talking to about, you have a, is an email that was sent out to you late this afternoon. Which doesn't help you for a meeting right now, I get it.
Okay, so Lisa, the bottom line is, the difference is 290, 125, 203, 138, 5 is $10,000 in transfer station equipment. Is, the savings there, $10,000, so it's now 5,000 instead of 15,000.
Yes.
And then we put for facilities equipment, I guess we put 400, 4,500.
It's a reduction in that line. Um, after talking to Jason this afternoon, he said he's not going to use all the funds, so I reduced that capital project funding by 4,500 so that it kind of, it'll reduce the amount of money coming out of the general fund.
Okay.
You don't need it, so we're getting rid of it.
And basically, that's, that's the changes right there.
Yes.
Okay. Next.
Do you want him to next in capital, Steven, or?
Next, next, wherever we need to go, so I can get to the bottom line that says we're going to need this amount of money and we're going to need it from this and take it from that and move this over type of thing.
Well, a big, a big increase in capital is really the fire department at the 175,000. And we've, we've talked to that considerably that, you know, we're continuing to fund the rescue truck. And it's, it's a required piece of equipment.
Right? And I can't believe we didn't have any money 2021, year 2020 to 2021 budget appropriation. We didn't put anything for capital for the fire department?
We thought last year that they were about to go out to bid and the FI PAC and Board of Suckman agreed to wait till we had a final bid number and then we would go to the town and use general fund to comp. To wait till we had a final bid number, and then we would go to the town and use general fund to complete the truck. But they didn't put it out to bid last year, so they're putting it out this year.
Okay.
And what they discovered as they started really researching was that. What they were going on as a six hundred thousand dollar truck is probably more like a seven hundred thousand dollar truck.
Yeah, I understand, and we've talked to that in length, so I get it. Okay.
In our savings plan.
Okay. All this stuff. Is good information. But I need to connect the dots by knowing. And, and that's the problem with doing this. I don't know how much money we have, I don't know where our capital fund is, I don't know, I mean, not our capital, but our general fund. Because I don't know what's put back in from departments and stuff, and we do this every year, and then. Five Pack makes its wax at it, next thing you know, we have a general fund next year at four million dollars, and we haven't done what we wanted to do, so. It's very difficult to do it this way. So unless, and I'm, I'm sure that Bev cannot tell me how much each department is going to give back, because the year is not over. Anything could happen. So we're, we're taking a guess and saying, we think it's going to be. Four point one, and we're going to have to borrow or take from the general fund to do all this stuff, eight hundred, seven hundred. Six hundred thousand dollars to do these things and not raise taxes. But the question is, what does Five Pack know, want to keep as a general fund? Healthy, and I think fifteen to eighteen percent is, is what we usually look at, we look at it, we never get to that. But they got their work cut out, because once again, we're going to give them. You know. Spot, best we can information, I don't want to say spotty, I mean, it's a, it's a. A moving target all the time, and it. Drives me nuts, but I know we do the best we can, so. What are we looking at?
So I'll just, I'll give you a little heads up, so that, Mark had already announced what the Board of Ed has approved. Right now, we're looking at about a three mil increase with all the budgets combined. And now bring the mill rate up to over thirty, almost thirty two point five. So. The fund balance, based on what I did this afternoon, looks like it's about three point five million, but you have to remember when. We, we took, oh, about four hundred and fifty, a little under four hundred and fifty thousand out of the general fund last year to. Cover, to keep it a zero. Increase last year, so that's why. You'll see that from the audit report, it was higher, but we had to take out for. To pay for the mill rate, keep the mill rate flat this year, so we already took out four hundred and, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, right now. Unless there's no changes tonight. We'll be giving Five Pack a three mil increased budget.
And so, if we were to take that out of the. Fund balance, would that be like? One point five million?
One point three five.
We're talking about. Let's see, the projected mil, one mil is about four hundred and eighty nine thousand, so. You're basically talking about, you know, about one point three million dollars at least.
What ha, I, I thought it was four point one, the general fund.
But remember, we had to take out, that was as of June thirtieth, that's prior to taking out the four hundred, and we'll say it was forty, four hundred and forty two thousand dollars to. Cover what we're not taxing the residents, to cover the mill rate, to keep it from being increasing.
Right.
So you gotta deduct that, and then basically, I did some. Predictions of. Basically on the revenue, because we're going to be short at least a hundred thousand at this point. So add that to the take from the fund balance, you're down to three point five right now.
Okay. And what's that percentage of our? Of what we're spending? What percentage is that, three point five million?
What percentage of that?
Yeah.
Full budget?
Uh, let me see. Three, five, I'll say three, five, five, nine. Divided by. Eighteen, seven, nine, nine. That's about, gives you about a. Almost a nineteen percent.
So that's nineteen percent, okay.
Now, we also have to remember too, that if the fire department does end up. From my understanding from the discussion yesterday or today, whenever that, we talked with Stephen and Tom, that was this morning. To possibly, they may ask for the balance, once they get the bid done, they may ask for the balance. That's needed to pay for the new rescue truck. Because it might save the town some money by paying for the truck upfront. So we may need to take some more money out of the fund balance unless. We work with the fire department for an alternative way to pay. What is needed for the truck. And that could be an additional hundred thousand, or a little more. But that's more discussion with Five Pack when we get to that point.
So we're recommending a three mil increase.
Between the town and the Board of Ed, but.
Pitchforks and.
Now, some of this will come down when. Because I know there's still some things that need to be done, besides lacking in the fuel rates, and the other one is the health insurance. We're, are working to try to reduce that, but that's something we'll talk about more in executive session. So there's a potential, some of this is going to come down.
Now, is there a potential to get any more grant money from the, for the COVID grant money?
So, right now. COVID is not supposed to impact the budget, it's not supposed to supplant it or anything, so anything we buy for COVID is outside of the budget. So there is some money that's pending right now for this year, that might reduce some of the budget line items. Because I have to repost and. All that, but I'm waiting for FEMA to give me a final okay of where they are, and then we're gonna work on. I have to work on the balance of the funds that we have currently now, or say some of that, but. I know the town is pretty much have purchased what they needed for COVID. Some of the money may go to the school for some of their continuing costs for the COVID for this year. So, and. You know, and I know one of the, the school did, we did factor in one of the. COVID grants they're going to get for next year, so. That was already taken into consideration in the. Town appropriation, so.
Does seem like a big increase that we're asking them to do.
What's next, Mark?
We need the fire truck, we need the, I mean, there doesn't look like there's anything we could cut.
So Bev, on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar valued house, we always say it's X amount of taxes per year, do we have that?
No, I didn't get to that yet, sorry. But. Let's see, if I can figure it out quickly, so. Thirty two, so. Let me see, so on a two hundred.
Ten percent increase. Right, if it's thirty and you go up three mil, like.
Yeah, you're not looking at percent increase, so. So your taxes will go up eleven percent, so say they were five hundred, they're going up.
Five hundred and fifty dollars. Always. Yeah, I don't know who's got five hundred in taxes. But.
Which, if you're on a fixed income, that's a tough nut to swallow.
Okay, well. I don't know what to tell you. Do a five percent cut across every department, boom, there you go, how about that? Really drastic measures. But. I don't know where we're cutting, take out Rec Park, I guess.
Oh, Red Park, that amount, what was the dollar amount for Rec Park?
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Two hundred and three.
Two hundred and three.
I was up at Rec Park today, it is being, right now, it's being used a lot, people really appreciate that. It's been great. Is there any? I mean, you could look at it to see what we could do this year and what we can do next year.
We actually broke it into two years right now, we're trying to get a well and a watering system for the softball field, because. It drains so well that the grass is dying. So that. All that mechanicals for that is going to be in the new concession stand. Storage facility that's right by the girls' softball field, so that's all tied together, that's phase one next year. Phase two is the maintenance garage out by the new parking lot. That we're building right now.
I mean, it is, it's, it's being used, I'm, I'm surprised how many people are up there today. And it's, it's pretty wet in the play, at the playscape.
Okay, Mark, I'm not sure what. What are we doing?
Bev, do you have, did you, were able to plug in some of these final? Discussions?
So, the only thing that I missed this afternoon adding was the, the one thousand, one seventy eight reduction for the. Library, so if you accept that change, the budget. Is now. Four million, five hundred and thirty one thousand and forty dollars, which is a two hundred and sixty thousand and sixty six dollar. Increase, which makes it a six point oh nine percent. Increase. So. That would only slightly change the mill rate. And capital, I already factored in all those in that, what was emailed out, so. That's still a forty nine point two three percent increase from last year. You, you, yeah.
I mean, you can only put off some of these projects for so long before you have to do them too.
Well, have to do them versus want to do them. Is not what we have to do, we would like to do it. You know, a couple other things in there, the twenty five thousand dollar generator at the senior center, we don't have to do it, it's nice to do it. So.
True.
There are things like that in there that we could. Watch Five Pack chop away at.
Yeah, so the, the question is, do you want to make reductions tonight, or send this budget as is to Five Pack? And then come back. With. I think that we gave them a little heads up this morning that we're still working on some things, so. You do have a choice of just passing this on to have Five Pack start working on it, and just like last year, we came in with some changes.
And we asked them to send it back to us.
Yes, so next week would be the. Whatever you pass tonight, Mark and Maria have to do the presentation. Once you get the presentation done, you certainly can let them know that you're still working on it, and. The week after, we'll have some updates for them. That'll give you two weeks to make changes. They also, we let Ernie know, oh, know today that. That basically, I assume you're gonna, including your sending forward, that you recommend taking some funds out of the fund balance, they don't want to know the amount. But they do. Ernie said he'd be fine if you just want to make a recommendation. That. We're looking to also use general fund to help cover these increased costs, so. So with that. You have a choice if you just want to motion to send this on as is, which is what the Board of Ed did. Monday night. And we're just going to keep working on it, and then come back when we have more. You know, once Five Pack really look, starts looking at it in two weeks, and just come back with what you have changes, and we certainly can send those suggestions to. Five Pack before the meeting on the twenty fourth, so as a prep or give it to them next week, so.
It's our deadline.
But, what'd you say?
What's our deadline for this?
So, by charter, we have to have this passed, given to Five Pack by the fifteenth. They like to have it within a week before, so really, I'd have to get this out to them by Friday at the latest.
Okay, thank you. So we kind of. We're, we're kind of have our hands tied, because. But we have a, an answer to be able to try and pull it back, if anybody finds some things to cut in here.
Yes, you can make recommendations to Five Pack. After goes, unless you want to. I guess, I think the only time we'd have would be another meeting tomorrow.
What is the projected savings and insurance money, should we? Should we, should the change occur that we're believing might?
We're what, we need to discuss that in executive session.
Okay. Well, it's also, well, I don't know, with the stimulus. And money going to schools and stuff, we don't have any, I, do they have any plan for that? Or they're looking at, or they're not quite sure?
There, there is possibly some funds, it hasn't been confirmed yet. And I know Maria, and I've been trying to see if I can find out too. What? They can use for, if it's to help them, or it's additional funds to use. So we can't answer that question until we know, because it's. To help them cover things that's currently in the budget, then it's fine, but if it's something additional, then.
Question, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Bev, because if it's additional, does it go against our MBR for next year?
If it's like the COVID funds, it shouldn't.
Yeah, shouldn't, but, okay, you know, we don't know, I know there's a lot of things, all right, very good.
Okay.
How soon in the process do we expect to get an answer to these unknowns?
So. One of them will come probably based on, within a couple weeks, based on our conversation in executive session. The fuel prices, we haven't locked in, but we were told to wait a little longer, because. There's a possibility the prices will be coming back down, last year, we ended up locking in like May, April or May. At a pretty decent rate, so we're trying to ride it out, and hopefully the prices come down.
Just because of the situation in Texas, they got kicked up, is that what's going on? The time being?
I think that's one of the reasons, yes.
And I think because they can, it's winter time, I don't know.
Yeah, there's been a few factors, but you were basically said, just call us back, because they didn't want to tell us the current price, so. Yeah.
Basically, we're in a situation where, where there's a lot of unknowns, Steve, so I think you gotta just send it forward and, and tell them that we. We're not happy with the current numbers, but we want to, we, we need time to pin things down. Yeah, I agree, we did it last year, I, I know that some of us were not. Happy with the budget, and Ernie said, okay, we sent it to them, and they sent it back to us with some different tweaks and stuff, so it can be done. You know, it's a, it's a terrible process, it really.
It is, it's hard, I mean, people are asking for something, nobody's overdoing it, it's just, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, so, okay. So, I, I, I make a motion, we send to Five Pack the. The fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget with the amended changes, talked about this evening. So I don't know what else kind of detail you need in the motion, Mark.
Capital and operating, are you doing two separate motions?
Well, if I said, if I do it in two separate, do they, it doesn't, I mean, does it matter, really?
No, you can put it in one motion, but you need, you need to. No, you can put it in one motion, but you need, you need to say it.
Right. Uh, so in, which would consist of capital and operating. So any more discussion? Rob, you okay in there?
Can't hear you, Rob.
Yeah.
You're, you're muted, Rod. Wave your hand if you need CPR. I know you're in there. He's, 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 he's trying to swallow that big nut. Yeah, guess what? You know, no squirrel big enough for that thing. So it's going to be tough, very tough. Okay. All those in favor? Rob, you in favor of spending, sending it on?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Stephen votes, yes, with a bitter taste. Um, that's my editorial. Okay, very good.
Um, now I'm gonna ask anybody who, who, who do you want in executive session, Stephen? Beverly and myself and everybody else to leave besides board members?
Are you skipping the other three parts?
Oh, sorry. You're right, Beth. Stephen, I, back, back to you. We're not ready for executive session.
Yeah, I don't have my book in here. Somebody was going to put it on my desk. Rob, what's next?
Town administrator report.
Correct. Town administrator.
I'm good.
Audience and citizens.
What's next, Rob, after that?
Audience and citizens.
Thank you.
Um, hold on, I'll look for chat. I mean, waving or.
Yeah, may, may not be many tonight, but you just wait. It's going to get busy.
Okay, there's no chats.
It's not going to be waving. Yeah.
Uh, I think we're clear.
Then go into the comments.
I'm speechless.
Yeah, I moved my time to the gentleman in the tall corner over, corner room over there. No, I'm good. Let's, uh, let's go into executive session. Okay, anybody, anybody need anything? So, right, so I, I'm, I moved to suspend the current Board of Selectmen meeting and, uh,
At 8:13.
Yep, and, um, move to enter into executive session, inviting Mark Walter and Bev Cirillo to join the Board of Selectmen.
Good night, Jen.
Mark, cut the recorder.
Okay.
Anybody left on there?
Okay, we, we came back out of executive session at 8:33. No vote.
And make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye.
Yes.
All those opposed? 2%. There you go. Thank you very much, everybody.
Night, night.
Good night.
Night everyone.